He has explained to the chair that it meets the criteria of policies. They motion to approve the electronic participation.
Second.
Mr. Tross, Dr. Carter, and Franklin, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Gilleyo.
Yes.
Mr. Tross.
Yes.
Dr. Day.
Yes.
Dr. Gupta.
Yes.
Dr. Carter.
Yes.
Mrs. Preston.
Yes.
Mr. DePaul.
Yes.
Mrs. Laurie.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Mr. Andrews. I'm going to join the meeting now. As in the new able. Dr. Day, pleasure, please.
My pleasure, ladies and gentlemen, to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under our, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Dr. Day. Next one is D1, agenda approval. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
Move, we approve the motion.
Dr. Day and Mr. DePaul. And I just wanted to, as Dr. Carter reminded, this is a special meeting called just to discuss the budget, so you don't see very many items. Would you please call the roll?
Mr. Gilleyo.
Yes.
Mr. Tross.
Yes.
Dr. Day.
Yes.
Dr. Gupta.
Yes.
Dr. Carter.
Yes.
Mrs. Preston.
Yes.
Mr. DePaul.
Yes.
Mrs. Laurie.
Yes.
Mr. Andrews.
As his health permits, he'll join us.
Motion carries.
Motion, thank you. Next one is E1, fiscal year 2025 operating budget discussion and approval. Dr. Edwards.
Yep, so we have a short presentation for you as well as a revised budget document. So I will go, my team is going to tag team with me, we'll go through the presentation to kind of highlight what's different from our last meeting approval, which would have been on March 19th when we approved the budget, but also the joint meeting with city on March 26th. Okay, so let's go. Next slide. There we go. Okay, so this is from our joint meeting with city council. I think it was like one of the last slides that we had at that joint meeting, so we're just going to pick up where we left off. And just a reminder to everyone, the budget that was approved by the board was, had a request of 43.7, and also included some reductions and cuts at the division level, at the school level. This budget included LCS restore, and it was based off the governor's budget from December 2023, which included a staff bonus of 1%. And we knew that there was a lot more activity to happen, and it did, so we also sort of front-loaded what we may do if the final state budget was different than the governor's budget, and some of the things that we prioritize is obviously not having as many reductions, and also we knew that there may be a 3% raise as opposed to a bonus, so we wanted to make sure that we could do that. And then, of course, if we could not tap into our health insurance, which is really borrowing from it, and reinstate any of the instruction-based division cuts. So since then, let's see what has happened since March. Next slide. Okay, so real quick, just a summary of where we were in December, January. If you were to go on the Calk tool, which is a public document that anybody could go on and you check LCS, you will see that the total revenue from the state would have been about 69.8 million. By the time you subtract out that restricted revenue, and we'll talk more about that at a later slide, the actual usable amount for LCS at that time was about 67.2 million. That's from the state. Fast forward, lots of work done, and here we are in May, and you can see what those numbers have changed to 74.4 million, which is in the Calk tool, sounds great, until you take out those restricted revenues. Again, that's on a later slide, and we get to about 71.8 million that is available for LCS to construct their operating budget. And just for transparency's sake, letting everyone know that those revenue numbers change if the ADM changes. So built into the Calk tool, the VDOE does predict or project what ADM is, and that is the projection number that we used in December. It was corrected to make sure that it was this, as well as the one that we built the budget on. And just for the public, should our ADM come in a little bit higher, obviously some revenue is tied to that, and the reverse is true as well, if it comes a little lower, revenue is tied to that. But we're building it based off that 71. Next slide.
So the budget, as you have it tonight, has a number of changes from the originally adopted budget that are recommended based on the changes in revenue. This is simply an overview of those changes. We're going to go into each one of these in more detail to provide a little bit more information, but we wanted to start out just providing this information so you can see the significant changes where we see them. So the first one is staffing reductions revision, reduction revisions, again, from the March 19th, 2024 school board recommended budget to city, to city council. You'll recall that that included the reduction of 103.1 FTEs, those positions that we have in the division. You will call that number likely from the joint meeting we had with city council at the Business Alliance a couple of months ago. With the changes in revenue, we have reduced that number from 103.1 to 85 FTEs. That's a reduction of 18 FTEs that we would, a reduction, oh, the reduction. That's still a lot of people, but it certainly is better than where we were, but again, still a lot of people. We also have revenue revisions, as Dr. Edwards mentioned before, state revenue moving from the original governor's budget of 67,217,000 dollars to 71 million, or 71.8 million. That's an increase of about 4.5 million dollars in usable revenue. However, the school board adopted and recommended a budget that included 43.7 million dollars, and as we are aware, there appears to be consensus around 39.3 million dollars to be provided from the city, and so we'll see a reduction from that. The expenditure revisions, the primary expenditure revision is the transition from the 1% bonus, which would have cost us approximately 336,000 dollars, to the 3% raise, which is 3.4 million dollars. But that, of course, reflects the 3% raise, plus also employees stepping onto their next step. And so we're going to go through each one of these individually, and you'll see a little bit more detail as we go forward.
All right, so just in terms of staffing reductions, we wanted to make sure that people understood where we were in terms of what we did originally in March, and then what we did in June, and a little bit more explanation, because inquiry minds want to know, what does that 85 look like? So I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Shepherd to just.
Thank you, Dr. Edwards. So you can see from the various columns there what the projections looked like originally. Teachers, 26.6, instructional assistants, 18 and 1/2, support positions, et cetera, for a total of the 103.1. That's where that number came from in March. Where we landed finally for that number of 85 individuals that have been reduced in force, job eliminations, we have the totals broken out for each of those categories as well, the 23.5, 15, 7, 10, 8 and 1/2, and 21. If you go to the next slide, you can see where those numbers actually impact lives, individuals, as opposed to vacancies. If you look at the teacher column. Thank you. If you look at the teacher column where we have the number 15, that is resignations, retirements, others, these are individuals that have removed themselves, or have been removed not from reduction in force, but have left the position for one reason or another. The reduction in force, that 8 and 1/2, there are names attached to those numbers, and those numbers represent a letter being given to that individual to notify them that their job is being eliminated, their position is not going to be returning next year. Same thing for instructional assistants, support positions, et cetera. So you see a total of 85 positions. That means 28 of the positions have a vacancy that we are not backfilling for the 2425 school year. 57 individuals have received that letter stating you will not be returning. So very disheartening, very hard conversations to have. We value all of our individuals, the services that they bring. These were not easy decisions to make. We tried very hard to have compassionate conversations so that these individuals understood this is not relative to performance or attendance issues or any, it is strictly based on the job being eliminated. And that means those individuals who are left behind are going to have to step up and absorb execution of the functions that have now been dispersed due to that individual not being there performing those tasks any longer.
Next slide. Go to the next slide. I think there's, Austin's doing two jobs down there, so. Austin, you're doing great. So throughout this presentation, we're going to stop and identify a couple of questions where we think, this is something you may be wondering. This certainly is for the board, but it's also for people at home who may be wondering about some of these things, or may not see the board meeting, and they may just see this presentation. So we wanted to explain a couple of things. As Ms. Shepherd said, all of these reductions are challenging, they are difficult, it's a difficult position to be in. Each one of these positions certainly impacts our school division. However, we think one of the most important questions that are going to be asked is that because there are teacher positions that are in the reductions, how will that impact class size? Because that's the most direct impact on our students. So the fiscal year 25 operating budget for elementary school includes class size reduction revenue, so we're keeping those at or below those class size requirements for K3. However, there may be some classes that are a little bit larger, because, you know, if the class size limit is 21, for instance, and you're at 15, we may be at 20, for instance, next year. So we will still be certainly within those guidelines, but there may be times when those positions, those classes may be a little bit larger. At the secondary level, the majority of the teacher position reductions that we see there are as a result of the transition to a seven-period day. Because there are fewer periods, so instead of eight periods in the cycle, there are seven periods in the day, as a result, there are fewer sections that need to be filled, and as a result, the majority of those positions are related to positions that have been vacated, and we just are not refilling them for those folks. So again, if there had been additional funding, it would have been certainly possible to have, to reduce class sizes at the secondary level in particular, but that is the position that we're in right now. So these are very challenging conversations, but we wanted to make sure that we address that particular question upfront, as we have a number of questions as well. I think we're going to try to get to the end before questions.
Yes, yeah, well, we'll cycle back.
That's it.
So let's talk about that restricted funding. From the governor's Calk tool, there's $2,689,071 in restricted funding. This is funding that can't be used anything other than, on anything other than a specific program that the governor has put in place, and cannot be used on anything other than that. So the net state funding that we're getting from the governor, 71,805,787. So this funding is so restricted, there aren't even input lines into the city's budget when we put our request documents in at the city level. There aren't even lines to input this restricted funding into their budget for those very purposes. So when you review the city's proposed or adopted budget, the state revenue, revenue that you see will not match the governor's Calk tool, because there is, there aren't even slots in the city's budget to put all of the revenue into. So that makes sense. Move on. So this is a snapshot of actually what those, the allowable revenue for operating that we got from the governor. So when I look at the first column, I see the governor and his little pencil out, working through the revenues with all the other competing interests, trying to figure out how to disperse that revenue across the many different departments that want a piece of it. So in December, when he's working through all of that, he projected that we, LCS, would So when he got to his, finished all of his little calculations with his pencil, he, I see the second column is that everybody got something, but nobody's really happy they didn't get all the something. But that label's too long, so we left it at "final recommended." And so the final recommended that he provided us was 71,805,787. Notice, that's what is in the city's, will be in the city's budget, and what we're providing to you tonight to ask the city to put in there. It does not include the 2,689,71, because there's not even a place in their budget for me to upload that into. So we ended up, to the good, 4,587,833. So he did his best at spreading the love across all the departments, and so we, this year, ended up a little bit to the good as a result of that. Next slide, please. So why does the final recommended operating budget have a different amount of funding from the Commonwealth of Virginia as compared to the school board's original recommended? I'm so glad you asked. So the city needs the school board's proposed numbers before the governor has made that final decision of giving everybody something, but not making them all happy. So the city needs those numbers before the school board has a chance to even see those final numbers. So what does the school board do? The school board looks at the information they have at the time there is a deadline to the city, to get this number to the city. And so it's basically a timing thing. We, at LCS, we budget on the information that we have at the time the request is due. So the budget information that we provide to the city doesn't always look like what the governor has done with his little pencil on the back end of it. So that's why we're here tonight, is to, after the governor has completed his job, we need to come back and say, this is what the governor did, and this is what we would like at this point. Okay, next slide. So when I look at the Virginia Department's Education website, and it says LCS will receive more than the final recommended operating budget projects, why is that? That is because of those restricted categories versus the allowable operating categories that we spoke about. So those restricted can't be used for salaries, for student supplies, for anything at the schools. They can only be used for those programs that the governor says they can be used for. So I'm summing up that paragraph for you, that the amount that you see in the requested or the recommended budget tonight is the amount that we are allowed to use on operating.
Which you don't see.
Hey, Austin, we kind of lost her up here. Come, back on down. So while we wait for the video to queue back up, again, we're attempting to do two things. One, we're talking through the budget, because we know that many of our constituents are watching, but we also know folks will download, as Dr. Wodoka said, download the PowerPoint, and it helps to have those questions in the PowerPoint so that they can answer their own questions as they get to the same questions that we, that we got to when we were doing the, the presentation. Sure, still waiting for video source to stand by. I think we can just, you all have it on your.
Uh huh. Yeah.
Well, let's just wait and make sure the school members have the PowerPoint up, at least on your mobile device. Okay, okay, great. All right.
So the next slide is.
Oh, perfect. Long enough. Good job, team.
The next slide is a simple one, something said just a few minutes ago, but just wanted to have, just in clear black and white here, this local, our city contribution and how that has changed from the original recommended budget on March 19th to how the final budget is balanced. Again, a reduction from 43.7 million dollars to 39.3 million dollars. And again, this is based on the apparent support for school funding at the city council.
So before you switch, just so the board is clear, when we, when we get, when we vote later, in essence, you're voting with the understanding that you're not asking city for 43.7, you are now asking the city for 33, 39.3 as a request. So we're changing our request by virtue of approval later, if you should approve that.
And then the next slide really simply says those same things in words. Again, why is the final recommended funding amount from the city reduced from the original recommendation from the school board? Again, the city council's first reading of their budget included level funding for 2024, 2025, as compared with '23 and '24, '23, '24. Certainly, LCS encourages additional local investment in our public school system here, but there does not appear at this point to be support for doing so at this time. So we certainly, we have crafted a budget that, that contemplates level funding.
All right, next slide. And that's me. So once again, not to be repetitive, but definitely to have a record of it, the original governor's budget included a 1% bonus. The now budget, the little pencil budget, I like that, includes a 3% increase for all staff, and we did talk about that at the joint meeting, that when that, when that is mentioned, that teachers or staff are getting a 3% increase, the state provides about, it changes a little bit year after year, 33% of the funds needed, and then LCS has to come up with about 67% of those funds needed. But I do want to take a quick moment just to call your attention to something, since we are talking about salaries. So if you could open up your, this is called the budget document, and go to page six, because I think this is a very important pause, and I'm going to ask Ms. Shepherd to help me out on that. So, so on page six, you see the operating expenditures, and we really want to make sure that our staff get the 3% increase, and the 3% increases in the right categories, because got to match the money to where, where the people are. But if we just look at the category of instruct- But if we just look at the, um, category of instruction, which is on the top of page six, you'll see the line that says Personnel Services. Underneath, you'll see Benefits. The Benefits is the Health and, the VRS and all the things. Personnel Services, everybody thinks, yes, that's salary. And you are absolutely right, because that's where the salary is. And if you can count all of us in this room and then say, what is our salary, times three percent, make sure that money's in there. But what you may not know is what else is in there. And I, I wanted to give Ms. Shepherd an opportunity to just talk about, in your department and when you work with the Finance Department, what other things are important for folks to know about that line?
Sure. So, there is the base salary that an individual is, um, agreeing to come to work for Lynchburg City Schools, and they're going to make X amount of money, regardless of whether they're, they are a salaried exempt employee, salaried non-exempt hourly, or whatever. There is the base salary. There is a lot of variables that are going to go on top of that, depending on whether there are some additional responsibilities. There are stipends. If an individual has a higher level of education, we will pay stipend for a doctorate, for a master's, for a education specialist. There are stipends for doing additional work. If a teacher happens to forfeit their, um, planning period, which we are required by law to provide to them so they can do some thinking, uh, while they're on the job and planning out. If they are required to forfeit that in order to meet services for students, and they take on that additional teaching component, then they have to receive additional money for that. Stipends are all over the place and for a host of very real needs. But it's very difficult to predict that as you move into it. Many times, it is going to be for coaching. It is going to be for, um, additional work when they have gone above and beyond. Say, we have an hourly employee that is now having to work overtime. Those kinds of additional monies will add up across the division, and they aren't necessarily, um, visible in a line item such as this. There's a lot of variables there. When it comes to benefits and things like that, yes, we can have a targeted amount. We know what the cost of the premium's going to be, et cetera. But when we think about the VRS, and we think about the defined benefit versus the defined contribution, and the defined contribution has an additional company match that, how do we predict when an employee is going to have additional investment that they are taking advantage of, and there has to be a company match on that? Lots of things. Unit leaders, department chairs, teacher mentors. There is very little opportunity to predict accurately who those individuals are going to be, how many individuals they're going to be needed based on the services that are going to be provided. So, there's some variable there, and I just want everyone to be aware that it is, my crystal ball is broken. I don't know how to predict what those numbers are going to be. What we can be certain about are contract dollar amounts. We know with the contract dollar amount, assuming that everybody starts at the beginning of the year, works through their contract period to the end of the year, and comes back next year and does it again, and we're going to give them an increase as they move up that step next year as well.
Yeah. So, part of it, and I know, um, page six is a very simplistic view of the breakdown of our budget and Personnel Services, but part of it is really making sure, um, that we don't forget, um, at least for the folks that we know are here and are returning, to include that master stipend in that line, to include that unit leader, to include that extra added, and I don't even know what they call it, when you're working in the mechanics at the bus, the diesel, all the extra training.
Certifications.
Certifications, thank you, ma'am, um, that you may get. We have some special ed, special education leads. All of that needs to be counted and accounted for, as well as kind of predicting, if we may, with new staff, and included in that. So, while we're doing categor, categorical funding and really looking at how much we think should be in each of these, um, categories, we need to make sure that we include those as well when we do the budget. So, just wanted to take a moment and make sure that we were all educated on that, because I know many of us try to stay out of Sherri's world when she starts talking about the stipends for and adding up the, the FTEs for the various different things, um, when we do it. So, um, and, this is my pause too, while we're here, because I do want to acknowledge on behalf of this board, 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 that, um, we will not forget that, two, two years ago, I don't even know, you did the fifteen-fifty, you were trying to get the teacher's salary up to fifty thousand dollars. This doesn't do it, goes up closer, which means we still have work to do. You get up to about forty-eight, four-ten, I think is where the three percent will be on that entry level, and then, of course, everybody down, um, will, will do that. So, we are happy about that, but we also want to make sure that we all understand we still have more work to do. There is an anticipated three percent next year, so we'll be back here trying to do this again, um, for the, uh, twenty-twenty-sixth, uh, school year. Also, just for you, Dr. Gupta, because I would be remiss, um, to not say that we, you were one of the first people to get us to living wage, which way back then was eleven-eleven, and then we moved up to fifteen dollars an hour with the fifteen, part of fifty. And I know you had interest to do, um, seventeen dollars an hour as entry for our minimum salary, and that the three percent does not get us there, so full transparency and acknowledgement that gets us to about fifteen, forty-five, fifteen dollars and forty-five cents, I believe, when you do, do that. And it is not where we would like to be. We would certainly like to be on that upper end and, and be able to do some things and, um, that others are doing. But again, moving in the right direction, which means next year, we got to continue the move, and maybe we could step it up a little bit more. Next slide.
So, all of the items that you mentioned a few moments ago are included in the line item for Personnel Services? Okay.
And this is just, uh, another one of our questions, um, and this is a difficult question and, and one that's, I think, challenging, I think probably people are thinking about a lot, is, um, you know, in any organization, if it's, if it's necessary to reduce the number of positions that you have, uh, you're also turning around and doing a pay increase at the same time for the remaining positions. So, could we not, uh, save money if we didn't provide a pay increase and therefore keep those positions? A very, very legitimate question. Um, and that, that, the answer to that comes into the nuance of how those raises are funded, uh, particularly because, uh, there, the, the state money that comes for those raises does require a, a local match. And so, when the General Assembly provides funds for that pay increases, Dr. Edwards mentioned before, only thirty-three percent of those funds, uh, is necessary, as provided by the state. And so, as a result, there is additional costs, uh, on the school division. So, uh, the important thing to remember is that if you don't give that raise, you also don't receive the additional funds for the compensation supplement. So, you would have actually less revenue if you didn't give the, 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 the raise. So, um, it is also, we just want to say, it's, it's very important that we continue to invest in our staff, um, that allows us to continue to be competitive, uh, and really to attract the highest possible, uh, um, candidates that we have, uh, for great instruction for our students. And again, we know that's a, that's sort of a dissonance, um, in this, in this process, but it is a, it is a reality of where, where we are, so.
And this one's me. Uh, just so that we're clear, what's happening to the LCS Restore with this budget? So, the funds that, um, were needed in the operating budget for LCS Restore are still in there, so we will continue that. However, again, just being in full transparency, LCS, LCS Restore is funded by multiple sources. So, there are some current grants, um, one being a five-year, one ending at the end of this year, another one, and I know as they, they're probably up there writing grants as we speak, because they try to get as much money to support the program. Um, but it is grant-funded, and it is also, uh, a pilot program. So, again, in full transparency, LCS Restore, particularly at the elementary level, does not currently have the space for every single grade level, um, of student. That would require some additional staffing, um, to do that. But as far as where we, what we have and, and trying to keep that and continue to provide services, that's a yes. Uh, the other question that comes up is about ADM and how it's calculated, and we had a little, um, little confusion on all the ADM numbers, but I think that we are pretty clear now in terms of the state, uh, actually calculates ADM, um, a couple of different times during the year. So, for our budgeting purposes, which will be about, we'll be right back here in October next year, we'll be waiting for the governor's budget in, um, oh, actually, no, because we already have that for next year. We already have the projected ADM for two thousand and six. We're going to use that VDOE, projected ADM, and the figures, uh, so, the numbers associated with that to build the budget. That's what this budget is built on, that's what next year's budget will be built on. And then, at the end of the year, ADM gets adjusted by the state based on the number of children, um, that we have. Um, and then, again, if it, if we have more students, we'll get a little bit more revenue. If we have less, we'll get a little bit less revenue. But I do want to just say that this document is not an exact science. This is our scientific method guess of what we think we're going to need. Um, and I also want to just, and we have it in here for the folks who will read our, our PowerPoint, but we have to monitor those unexpected costs. And, and you all know, one of the biggest ones we had is health insurance and really having to, uh, pay those claims and make that balance. We also had it in utilities, although we think we may be a little bit better, um, with utilities, but, um, there are, there are unexpected things that happen, so. Okay, last slide. See? Short presentation, right into questions and discussion, and, um, we'll be happy to take questions. Um, I do also want to give you time for questions, but also, um, the companion document, this is very similar to the one that you had when you voted in March. It has all the new numbers, um, in it with the new revenue. So, we can also go through this, but we wanted to take a pause because we just hit you with a nice PowerPoint.
Let's start with Mr. Andrews, because we leave out the person on remote. So, because once the floor's, Mr. Andrews, do you have any questions to begin with? We can come back again to you.
No, stop.
All right, thank you. The floor is open. Any questions for Dr. Edwards and the team?
Well, I have a few.
Dr. Day, go ahead.
I had several. See if I can remember what they were. Um, on, well, when you were talking about, um, I think it's slide seven, will teacher position reductions include increased class sizes? And you explained what would be happening at the elementary level. But at the secondary level, uh, you said primarily because of the change from eight to a seven-period day, uh, we need fewer, uh, uh, teachers and teaching staff. So, that will account for the reductions there. Does that mean class sizes will stay essentially the same at those levels?
Um, maybe, maybe not. It depends on the section. So, if you can imagine with the eight-period day over the AB block, I may have four or five sections of a class that are now being reduced to three or four sections of a class. So, once students enroll in that, that might change a little bit, but we're still not trending to packing classrooms. Um, and if you've been in our classrooms, you'll see that it's almost difficult to pack, like, thirty, forty kids in a classroom, so that's not what we're attempting to do.
Okay, let me see if I can...
And if I may just...
Go ahead.
Follow up with that. But everything, we're still within our, our, our class size reduction numbers, so we're still within that, and that's developed by the Virginia Department of Education.
Yeah, and that's for K-three, um, class size. Yes, that, that, yeah, there is no class size reduction for the upper grades, um, just good, there's good practice that you don't...
And do we, are we, are these, uh, are we still within those good practice guidelines in terms...
It, yes, they've been working on scheduling based on what, remember, we made the decision for seven-period days, so they were able to start the scheduling. So, they're doing that, um, right now as they, as, um, as we speak, they're still.
And while we don't, um, have actual caps, there are, there are some, um, guidelines that we have to follow in SOQ, and we also have to report not only our K-three, but we report our K-five, um, pup, student pupil teacher ra, teacher ratio. But we also then, at the secondary level, um, by school, we have to, uh, report the pupil count, the teacher count, and then that's the pupil teacher ratio for the school, um, and that has to be at a certain level. Um, and that's posted, always posted on our website. It has to be posted by December first of every year. Um, we typically have it sometime in October, um, but we're always within those limits. So, we make sure that, you know, we're following the guidelines.
Do we still get money for that stipend for keeping it below the twenty-five?
For K, for class size?
For K-three?
Oh, yeah. We, actually, we budgeted that as revenue, so if we go up, we're going to lose that money.
Okay.
So, I have another question. I'm, I'm pretty sure you've already answered this, but I want to be sure I understood. On page eight, where you have, uh, the number, uh, for restricted funding and then the net state funding. So, I want to be clear, does that net state funding include the restricted funding?
No, sir.
Does not include that? Okay, um, let's see. I suppose you've all answered, um... She's looking if anybody has questions, so feel free to go ahead.
Um, okay, are we asking for the thirty-nine because we're getting the four million? Is that why we're not asking for forty-three? Trying to make that clear in my head.
Well, we, we've, we've been through a couple of different meetings, and, um, I have not seen any indication that city council is going to move. They did their first reading of their budget, of the budget inclusive of schools, and then pulled schools out, um, and in that reading, it says thirty-nine, three-sixty. So, I, I think that's probably a safe place to be and, and put that in our request as well.
So, when the governor gives us his count tool and the numbers that we saw, it's really just for the city, it's not an educational portion?
When the governor does his count tool, it's based on state revenue only. The thirty-nine is city, uh, that's local.
Okay, all right. And then, in the page seven, um, where it says operating fund, and it says tuition and payments, what is that tuition, what's that tuition applied to? Is it just, um, people that are getting their master's degree? Or is it tuition for, like, kids that are going to, um, is it Governor's School and CBCC and things like that?
Let me catch up to you, uh, page seven.
Uh, down near the bottom.
Oh. Yes, I do believe, because we do pay, I just want to make sure I'm not telling you the wrong line, we do pay tuition for, um, kids to do dual enrollment and the CTE Academy, and like you said, GovSchool SIM Academy, there's a couple of other places where we, we pay, uh, tuition to those agencies.
Okay, that's, that's one of those, okay.
We'll be back to your question. Yeah, so, um, I wanted to ask about the three percent pay increase. Um, my understanding from previous conversations is that, where did it go? There it is. I think that, my understanding previously was that, that a portion of that would come from the state and the portion would come from local funds. And does that remain the case?
Yes, so about thirty-three percent comes from the state.
Thirty-three percent, so about a third. And then, two-thirds local.
Yes.
Okay, so, that number that we've been seeing for the net state funding, that includes the thirty-three percent from the state for that?
Yes, if you go in the count tool, you'll see there's something called a compensation supplement. That is the state's money towards the, the three percent increase.
Okay. And you've said that this budget that's before us does include funds to continue with LCS Restore. You explained that that's also dependent on availability of grant funds, but as far as the local funding for that, we're going to, we are continuing with that.
We're continuing. We have the grant funds, but grant funds aren't...
We're continuing with the, our budgeted portion of it.
Well, we're continuing with the program and services, but I also want to make sure that folks understand that it is also funded by, um, and I stopped grant and, and mental health, school mental health grant. There are other grants that the Student Service Department has written to support that as well.
So, what I mean to be asking is that our various discussions of how much we were going to request from the city, we, at first, we, the original proposed budget way back in January did not include funding. The board wanted to put that back in. And so, what I'm trying to be clear on is, uh, we have now put it, it is back in here, and that, the number we had from back then was about one-point-two.
One-point-two, right.
Right. Okay, and then I want to come back to the stipends issue that we talked about. So, this was at the top of page six of the, uh, recommended final operating budget document. Um, so, I want to be clear, does the number that I see here, School Board Recommended FY twenty-twenty-five, a fifty million? million plus, does that include the stipends or not include the stipends? The stipends are part of that.
It does.
Yes, sir.
So, what you were explaining was the unreliability of our estimates of, of those amounts.
It's hard to predict, yes, sir. I mean, returning employees, we might have a pretty good idea. But as individuals come in, as new hires, it's, it is a variable. But we certainly look at past experience and the continuation of an employee, then yes, it's predictable. Because the individual has a master's degree last year, and they're gonna return with a master's degree next year.
So, that means that that number is not rock solid. It's gonna juggle around a little bit as people come and go and make their decisions.
And if I may, the, the, we wanted to explain that the methodology of taking that number and multiplying it by three percent would never work. Because there is, there are not only salaries in there, there are also additional pay codes of coaches, stipends, and all the, the numerous stipends in there. So, you can't look at that budget line or the prior-year budget line and multiply that by three percent and get what the new budget line should be.
Right.
Because of the different pay codes that are commingled within that instructional salary line.
So, in brief, it's complicated.
The other thing that, the other thing that
It's not a stagnant number.
The other thing that people, which in common sense, you might think this, like, what's the average salary for your teacher personnel? And then multiply that times, how many teachers do you have? And then multiply that times three percent, and that should give you a ballpark. But again, while that sounds very logical for the, the, the folks to do, it, it's missing a lot. So, we just wanna make sure that people understand that in there is other things. And we haven't even talked about substitutes, because I do believe the substitute budget, we also budget for substitute teachers in there as well.
I have a question. You mentioned that the teachers will have to take up for the, the empty positions that are not gonna
We said staff.
Yes, staff. Yeah, the staff will have to take up. In that stipend part, are they gonna get an extra stipend for extra duties?
So, we have not created new stipends. So, for, for at the high school level, there is a, if you, as, as Ms. Shepherd said, if I give up my prep period, which I'm legally entitled to, to prepare for class, and I decide I wanna teach another chemistry section, just, there is a stipend that's built in for that. So, but with, with regard to specific duties, unit leader, there's a stipend built in for that. But we didn't create anything new as a result of having to do
The reduction in force and stuff?
Yeah, yeah. And I will say, just with regard to that, that's a work in progress as we get to July one, and we realize, similar to what we did last year, much of our reduction in force was in the communications department. So, as we got to July one and we started doing some things, we realized that we had more staff who used to do some things. So, a couple of things have to happen. Either you try to put a little bit extra on people's plate, which is never where you, you wanna be, or you reduce services, or just say, like, some things, while we love them, we don't have, we don't have the time to either do them as frequently or do them at, at all.
I have two more questions. Where in this, this is small potatoes compared to what we're talking about here, but where in this does the board's expenditures fall? Membership fees, professional development support, where in, where in this would those be included?
You are under administration, and you, your, anything for a membership to a school board organization is probably under purchase services. Your professional development, registration, all of that is probably under purchase services. Any materials and supplies that we would need to, for board to, you know, operate would be under materials and supplies. And actually, you're coded to, so when people, you're coded to my cost center. So, if, when my cost center gets reduced, it's, you're in there, although you have separate function codes within my, within the cost center, to the superintendent's office. So, when people look at what is the superintendent's budget, it includes all your travel, your stipend, any, anything that's related to. You are under that cost center.
Now, last year, when we were struggling to balance our budget at the end, that, one of the things we did is reduce the amount that we were spending for those things for the board.
Across the division.
Yes. So, what I'm asking is how does the number you have in there at this point for the coming year compare to what it was in the past?
Yeah, I can look up exactly what we put in the, each individual line, and usually Tina will have a, when we get it set up, a running record of it. But again, it's still money budgeted for your memberships, for your professional development, and the supplies. Usually, what we try to do is, let's get a few less staples and things like that. We don't, because we share a lot of things. I will say, one of the wildcard budgets in mine that we actually share, it's not separated, is legal. So, each time that we have a meeting that is, we have to have legal services, they get paid by, I feel like the minute, but it
It doesn't matter.
It, it's not, it's, and, and of course, you all, you pay for time with them, you pay for time in person, you pay for research, and you pay for documents, for legal. So, you know, board has some legal, special education has some legal, just general administration has legal, student services has legal. So, we, we predict a legal budget, but that's one that I'm
So, we don't have a separate legal budget for the board?
It's, all the legal is under the cost center of superintendent's office.
Okay, and so, that would be, show up here just under, again, the heading of purchase services.
Yes, but whenever there are, like, we had the specific account for two hundred and fifty dollars specifically for unitary status, that is, even though it's in the, in the budget, it is a separate thing.
Right, right.
So, when we did all things unitary status in the beginning, we subtract it from that account. When we're doing things like a consult about the latest code change, we're, we're subtracting here, but we do keep, yeah, they have detailed records of it.
And then, my last question is, in talking about the reductions in force that reduce numbers of teachers, are we gonna make it this fall?
Yes, we're, we are always gonna make it. So, we are working together. Obviously, you have seen our resignation list. You've seen those lists at the end of the year. And you know, that doesn't, doesn't make any of us happy. We did not want to lose a single person. But we understand that people have to make choices based on their personal situations. What we would like to do is have some finality now and say that we're, here we are, we're stable, we're ready to go, and get our vacant positions that we are refilling, get those positions filled. And working as a team, particularly where we see different areas, whether it's a department, or a content area, or building that we have more vacancies in, we have an assault team that kinda goes in there together, so that we can get as many people in our classrooms as possible.
So, when will the funds be unfrozen? Because you said we had to freeze it, so we couldn't really do as school board members, traveling and all that kinda stuff. When will that be unfrozen?
So, are you talking the current year?
Yes, well, just whatever the next budget, when it starts.
They, they don't start frozen. So, it's, it, the, the freeze or the, the reduce. And actually, so just for the listening public, one of the things that we said is just, we, we put a freeze on spending. However, if there were things that people absolutely needed and had to do, and, and there were requests, obviously, they were calling and talking to us, and we were honoring those requests. So, nothing was actually ever hard no, you can't go. And for folks who had, you know, registered and had already committed to things, or whatever the case may be, we still approve that travel and that, those things, if they were to go to a con, not a concert, a conference. So, many of the conferences, they put out their schedule at the beginning of the year. So, we know at the end of the year, there's this conference or that conference that our teachers go to. If they had to have mandatory training, and there's mandatory training for the principals that they have to absolutely do. So, our purpose for freezing it was making sure that we had funds available to do those particular things, rather than, it would be really nice if I could, or it would be great if I could take a team to. So, if it was something like that, where this new thing came out, like, for example, I would have loved to take a team to an AI training. And I think that's important. However, in times of a freeze, that's a no, because we have people who have some mandatory training, that we need to make sure we have the funds for them to participate in their training with that. And with some, in addition to the training, it depends on where it is. There's a overnight hotel, and so on and so forth, that folks also, we have to budget for that with particular people who do that.
So, did that limit our sports teams and stuff, their travel, or anything?
We limited our sports at all.
Try to, try to reduce, like, direct impact on students as much as possible. So, if it was, if it was, a student was doing it, we tried to keep it going.
Okay, and those coaches still got their stipends, right?
Oh, yeah. It didn't, it didn't touch stipends or anything like that. And then, of course, it was, like, if you wanted to register for a conference that was a webinar or something like that, that was a little bit easier to, to do than having, you know, a larger, like, something in California. That wasn't a mandatory or pre-approved or something like that.
Mr. Delia.
Under page six, how do you riff a point five of a position?
If an individual is shared between facilities or something like that, it can be a half a person, or it could be a part-time person. So.
Okay, part-time or shared responsibilities between two departments?
Or two buildings.
Buildings.
Two schools.
Or just number of hours that, right, they work during the week.
All right. On page eight, what do the extra dashes mean? That the following words are attached to them?
Which, which document are you in?
The budget presentation.
Technology is BPSA. That's, is that what you're talking about?
Yes.
The technology dash?
And school lunch, and special education?
No.
So, there's all-in academic governor's school technology BPSA, which is, those are specific funds for student technology, laptops, computers, those types of things. School lunch would be one, special education, state-operated programs is one, special education jails, mentor-teacher program. So, special education jails, we have to provide special education services to anyone who is twenty-one, twenty-two or under, if they have an IEP. And we, as a school division, have to then go and provide their services at the jail. So, those are funds that we can't use for anything else. That's what that's saying.
Restricted, yes. I just wanna, which was
So, the dash, whatever is dash is what is, it's used for.
Okay. On page fourteen, the same budget presentation, why does the locality provide sixty-seven percent of the funding to us? When, is this just for this, that three percent increase? Because beforehand, we were talking about the fifty-five percent to forty-five percent.
Right. So, the, when we, when, when it's announced, you're getting a three percent raise. It's only for the SOQ-funded positions. So, the state will provide a portion of that raise for the SOQ-funded positions, and then we have to provide the rest of that raise. And remember, that's also based on an industry standard average of, and then we calculated. They don't sit there and say, you have so many veteran teachers who, when you do the three percent, it's gonna cost this. It, it's an average. It does not include the rest of the staff, who also may be, and I think I had a slide at, on the joint meeting showing how many kindergarten, first, second, third grade teachers, if we were to just say, this side is SOQ-funded, the rest of them aren't. It does not provide any compensation for those folks. So, that's where you'll see, like, the fifty, forty-three. That means that about fifty, some odd percent of our staff are SOQ-funded, and then the rest are not. So, the not folks aren't getting any money from anywhere, except the locality if we choose to do that.
All right. And are the pay scales going to remain as is or change according to the three percent addition?
Pay scales are up as we speak, and they are on our website with both last year and the projected year. But they do have a little disclaimer that says, pending, of course, approval of the budget.
Okay. Lastly, I'd like to motion to add a cost center line under the administration category for the superintendent's budget codes.
Would you repeat it, please? Add what?
On page six of the recommended operating budget, I'd like to motion to add a cost center line under administration for the budget codes the superintendent mentioned.
A cost center line?
Right, there's a cost
What does that mean?
A line labeled, you wanna explain?
So, I think what you're saying is, under where it says administration, it should say attendance and health. You wanted to say superintendent's costs versus other things. So, great question. What I think you might not know is that there is a defined account structure that the VDOE has that we, we use and we have to use. And so, those, those are the, the function codes that are, that are there. So, we have to, we have to account that way, because that's gotta be the way that it goes into the annual school report. And so, if you were to differentiate that out, what we could do is, in the future, create a, truly a cost center that says, that differentiates between superintendents versus board.
There's a function.
That would be like the difference between, yeah, that would be like the difference between a different school, right? That may just be different. And we can, we can share that for the future. But we, but I think we need to probably stick with the VDOEs.
With the, with the exception, if, if that's what you're trying to do, with the exception of legal, our stuff, if you were to go into the OLEO system, and I'm gonna speak from a non, y'all, you find that they have way technical, I'm gonna speak from the non-technical. When I go through and look at the nine oh one, which is what my cost center is called, and you think of three oh one being one of the middle schools, right? When I go in there, there's a whole, there's about sixteen different numbers, like, almost like a crazy long phone number or something. The next set of numbers would differentiate school board money from superintendent money. So, the money for your PD and the money for our purchase services and mine, they're separate. The only thing that we are sharing, and I actually share with multiple people, and it's just so we can keep track of it, is legal. So, when HR, if they have, I don't think you have your own legal So, I get the bills for everybody talking, everybody with legal. And in my line, I also have a separate one that comes to my office for special education. So, that is the only area where, across the division, if we're really engaging with attorneys, that it's all in one big, one big bucket. But we can buy, I think it's function code, I'm not sure what it is that separates.
It's gonna show, it's gonna show in that, in the same way. It's just gonna, you wouldn't have a different category.
Well, I like your idea.
So, we have a specific chart of accounts that we follow according to VDOE structure. But what we can probably do is create a special report that just pulls those expenditures out to show you specifically what is associated to the school board versus the superintendent's accounts.
That'll be helpful.
So, a special report versus changing the structure of, of the VDOE chart of accounts.
And Tina has access to that, so we can just make it, like, whatever you guys decide how frequent or whatever, we can, we can do that. Simple. Won't include legal, just know that, that's
Now, is there a reason that we, the legal expenses need to be confidential?
Not so much confidential, but just in paying the actual bills. Because the way that they, we get billed from the various organizations is by their different things. They don't always know that, when I was talking to this person, that this was specific for, this should go to a special ed number, this should go to transportation, this should go to student services. They were like, this goes to LCS, and we want our due diligence.
So, I just, I just wonder sometimes if it wouldn't be helpful to the board to know, when we call in one of the attorneys to give us advice, how much are we committing financially to do that?
Denise can, my, my, since they're all coming, she kinda tries to keep track. So, she'll, she'll let special ed know, hey, you're, you're kinda, you're up there a little bit. So, generally, we can kinda sorta figure out that, your board's a little easier, because you don't, you don't have students involved. So, there's no special coding or anything like that. But we can certainly do that.
Okay.
Other questions? I have a few. And Ms. Jameson, Shepherd, and Dr. Ward, and Dr. Edwards, thank you very much. So, don't take my line of questioning to question your numbers. My target is, a dollar increase was costing us nine hundred thousand dollars, right?
Dollar increase in what?
In, in the hourly wage. It was about $900,000.
Approximately. That was prior to the cuts and all of that that we've done, yes.
Assuming it's a stationary model, so. Now, 1% bonus on your tables was 300. So, I'm trying to reach that $900,000. So, that's the whole thing I'm trying to do. Your, your personnel cost without benefits is 62 million, with benefits is about 92 million. So, a percent increase is about 900,000, right?
Sure, yes.
And the 3% increase is about $2.7 million. Now, we got 3.4 million in this 3% increase. Where is that gap coming from?
So, the actual 3% is 2.5, I think, 1, 2 million. The difference in that is the step increase from all of the positions that stepped up as a result of getting the 3%. So, you get the 3%, takes you to a higher level, you have to accommodate for that step in the structure of, of your position. So, the difference is what that step costs.
So, that's the step change which will add more than 3% to some of the individual salaries.
Yes, sir, that is correct.
And that's what the delta is coming from.
Yes, sir, that's where the difference is.
That means I didn't save a dime there. All right, let's go. That 1% bonus you had was $336,000.
Yes, sir, that is what the amount that the governor had put in his preliminary budget for a 1% bonus. That did not cut, that only covered the SOQ positions. It didn't cover everyone.
So, it means, because 1% of 62 million is about 600,000. So, I thought we were still, you got lot more savings there, but you're accounting only 336. So, what you're telling me is you only accounted for 336. Rest you are counting for the city to pitch in or come through our internal funding.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
So, you didn't save anything there?
I, I'm zero on two.
Try it, go ahead for free, we'll tell you.
So, LCS restore, the budget was 1.2 million dollars.
Yes, sir.
And, you know, I've, I've dealt with so many grants over a period of time, there are indirect costs involved. You know, there is a, for a lack of word, the budgets are slightly higher because the government is funding it. When the government is funding it, a dollar stuff may be a dollar 50. So, and I asked that question before, what is the real cost of operating it? Because it's 1.2 million was through the grant funding, you know, through the federal funding. So, and what I was hearing through the, you know, great point was about 700, 750,000. So, again, I'm asking, I, I understand it, it needs, the budget is 1.2 because it was funded by state, by federal funding. What is the, if you, you and I are running a business, how much will it take to run that?
So, there are in-kind costs that are incurred through a locality to administer those grant-type programs. From a, a, a local operating governance, those aren't always easily trackable because, say, my payroll and benefits person is working on this particular program's person's payroll and this particular program's pay, person's payroll. So, it's not easy to track how much time they spent on this program versus how much time they spent on that program. We usually refer to that in the local government world as joint cost because you are using that joint cost to work on everyone's thing. So, that's a hard number to land on for me to be able to tell you to operate this 1.2 million dollar program. How much does it cost in, in the actual operating side to operate that? Other than a portion of that salary is used for that.
See, in the private business side, for lack of word, I call it double dipping. You know, joint costing is you count it here, you count it here. So, and the books are showing a cost. That's what I was looking at, how much, not double dipping, how much is the overlap? Overlap will be the right, right? Overlap appropriate costing in that structure.
So, so as I recall from when we, when we produced that 1.2 million dollar number, that was taking the people, the salaries of the people who work in the program, salaries and benefits of the people who work in the program, plus obviously some, some small materials and supplies. So, that's where that number comes from, and then you add, you know, 3% to that.
Cause the LCS restore is good, but the teacher to faculty, the student ratio was five to one in the numbers you guys presented before. That's, that's pretty low, you know, compared to our classroom size. Again, going back to, is it possible to achieve some cost savings? Because five to one may be the lowest in our system, you know, throughout Lynchburg City Schools. So, based on how many faculty were assigned, right, and the number of students we were serving.
We probably have some students with special needs, special needs classes that are awesome. And that's what the, every job I name and by me, whatever that need is, so.
And these are the, the students that really need that individual small attention from these specifically trained teachers and instructional assistants and RVTs and BCBA's.
Yes, absolutely.
And these are the students that when this, that, let's just say, a kindergartner who's coming in and has never been in a classroom before and is, you know, is participating, after a few days, is participating in LCS restore at the elementary level, the classroom that that child left to go to LCS restore, the teacher can now focus all of their attention on all of the other students and their needs versus having to spend the majority of their time focusing on that one student who really needed that individualized attention. And the goal is to get them, you know, while there may be five or six in a class, the goal is to get them transitioned back into their classrooms so that, you know, if there are others that need to come in, they certainly may. I don't think it's realistic to think that the program is gonna have the same impact and the same outcome and success if we say we, you know, we're gonna increase our class sizes to, to 10 or 12 or whatever it might be. It's a very specific need and that's why it's been successful.
The other thing is the ultimate goal, even if we look at elementary level, is to ensure that students have time for learning. So, if part of my behavior is interrupting my minutes manner, my time, if I need to get my behavior under control so that when I do take the SOL, I am not one of those reasons why we are now faced with an achievement gap. I, I really want to, we wanna maximize getting students ready to learn and expanding those opportunities to learn. And we know that some of those behavioral interruptions, not only for the child who's having those issues, but for Sharon who's sitting next to me trying to concentrate and I'm interrupting her. And we know the lasting effects of that. What happens if that's not dealt with early? And then, once they get to middle school, we may start to see some masking of just, I'm gonna just demonstrate behaviors because I haven't mastered the content air stuff and that kinda stuff. So, it, it, you know, there are benefits and trade-offs here and there and, and, you know, it's.
You know my weakness. You mentioned achievement gap and you know the guy will shut up.
I did, didn't I see there? But, but I didn't do it just to get you to be quiet, but I really wanted to show you that.
It's absolutely true, yes.
So, going back, you mentioned that this LCS restore has still federal funding, which is joint cost, right? Some funds are being used through different grants to run this operation and though they may have a sunset of next year or the following year. So, in my mind, I'm thinking next year, how much additional cash will we, will we need through our budget lines to supplement or to support the money which will have a sunset for next year? Do we have a number on that?
I, I don't have a number on that at this time.
I don't, and I think the, the school-based mental health grant is five years. We've just finished year one, so there's four more on that. There was one stop grant that was from January to June, so that's just this year. And those funds were not used on, you know, people, recurring costs. Then there's another three-year grant, so again, we've just completed that first year. So, don't think we have anything significant that's tied to LCS restore. And some of those other, those grants also have expenses that are not just related to LCS restore. So, a lot of those grants, especially the school-based mental health, that's providing the mental health services in all of our schools across the division. So, the next couple of years, there've already been some changes this year to Medicaid billing that will help us as a division be able to afford this, should some of those grants go away. But I can also tell you that, you know, Dr. Brown and Ms. Stokes, Zoe Stokes, one of his supervisors, they are always looking for grants and I believe that they are getting ready to submit another, you know, grant, which is multimillion dollars to support, you know, mental health and, and behavior.
So, those indirect costs for grants, do we use them to supplement our salary budget line?
Yes, sir. Some of the grants have in-kind costs built into them as a match. So, we are able, depending on the type of grant, to use work that is performed at the administrative level to, to offset a, an actual local cost of having to offer the funds to match that. So, I do know he is working on some grants with some in-kind costs because we worked through some of those with him, but I, I can't give you an exact number of them right now.
I wonder, I have two more questions, but I wanted to go to Mr. Andrews if he has any questions because he hidden behind the presentation. Mr. Andrews, you got a question?
No, I don't have any questions. This is very good, this is very good discussion, though. I'm really enjoying it. But no, I don't have any questions.
Send us some gift cards, we'd love to have it. You, I think, I had two more questions. Why, I think you were raising your hand or?
No, you go ahead, cause I was ready to make a motion.
All right, so my next question was, I'm assuming in this current budget, we are not using those $2 million of coronavirus to balance the budget, or are we?
To balance the budget, no, sir.
Or to, to have the savings.
For next year?
Yeah.
Oh, so let me, yeah, let me address that too since, so that you, so that we, again, in full transparency. So, remember, we have staff members who, and I think I gave you a list of like the administrative assistants and the, there were 25 teachers and guidance counselors, there were some others, but I just was trying to pull out some, whose salary was moved, all in, in part because we also wanted to do 15, 47 and all of those raises and things like that. The CARES funding is going to expire on September 30th. So, in essence, they, that, that part is going to, the part of their salary is going to be gone after three months of, like, this is your last payroll, and that's where the operating budget kicks in to do that. But I'm so glad you brought that up because that was on my to-do list to say that, to make sure that we are all very aware that basically the operating part is picking up nine of the 12 months if we look at it that way. And when we get back to next year, we still have that to, to budget for.
Cause my concern is that next year's board budget will be starting with a $2 million in hole, right? Because that operating salary for 12 months will stay fixed, plus 3% as suggested by the governor, right? Which will be another million and a half plus on top of through. So, we'll be looking at next year for a gap of 3.5 million. I may not be here, but the gap will be there. You see what I'm saying?
Which is, yes, which is where I said at some point, level funding stops working, right? And we, we, we have had level or less for four or five years in a row. And while we have been able to make it, and I'm, I'm very grateful that we've been able to increase the salaries of our staff and, and all, and everybody, but at, you're exactly right, like, if we continue on the level path, that's not going to make it.
So, with all these cuts, just, for the public, we're still using $2 million of temporary money to balance the budget, right?
For a couple more.
For a couple more months.
Couple of more, you said next fiscal year, so wholly, it'll be a hole in the next year's budget. You use it for, you can use it in a day or you can use it in a month, but it, on your balance sheet, it shows up as a deficit for the next year. So, for the public to watch, with the governor's 3% recommendation and that 2 million will have a gap of around minimum of 3.5, maybe higher unless we cut more things. Am I correct in assumption?
Well, I, I don't wanna put any numbers out there right now because, you know, I don't know what's gonna happen between now and then. I do know not only are we trying to cover those, those positions with this funding, we're also using some of that funding to, on students to try to get some, you know, some textbooks and things like that purchased with it before the funding runs out. So, it's not just staff that we're using the funding for. There are also some unfunded mandates around textbooks. So, we're, we're trying to, to disperse that funding and utilize it as equitable as possible. Yes, sir.
I'm done with my questions. I didn't get my $1. Go ahead, Dr. Carter.
I wanna, I wanna move that we rec, we adopt the budget.
Motion, second, Dr. Carter and Mr. DePaul, any discussion on the motion to adopt the budget? And the understanding is it's in line with what the city approved on their last June 4th meeting with the level funding?
Level funding, yes.
So, that's, this budget is basically in line with what was recommended by the city manager and approved by the city council in first reading?
Well, recommended in terms of just the 39.3. I think we have a, what we're presenting is a little bit different because we have contingency. Is that what?
The categories will be a little bit different because they reflect that, but, but the revenue from the city will be the 39.3.
Cause we had 37 something and the rest was in contingency, they'll move up to the operating lines, right? That's what you're saying? So, Madam Clark, would you please call the role?
Mr. Jalil.
Yes.
Mr. Andrews?
Yes.
Mr. Charles?
Yes.
Dr. Day?
Yes.
Dr. Gupta?
Yes.
Dr. Carter?
Yes.
Mrs. Preston?
Yes.
Mr. DePaul?
Yes.
Ms. Laurie?
Yes.
Motion carries now to zero.
Let me see what, so, that's the item, right? You want, so the information item is financing facilities, June 30, 13th at 3:30. Next school board work, work session on June 18th at 5:00 PM. Ad hoc discipline committee meeting on June 27th at 3:30. And the following school board meeting is on July 9th, we'll, we'll talk on June 8th. And with any other matters, we are adjourned.